Call a meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I have a motion for the minutes of the March twenty second, twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen meeting.
So moved.
Second. They're moved in second, and all those in favor? Oppose? No one. Motion carries unanimous. Motion to accept the minutes of the April second, two thousand nineteen meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? No one. Motion carries unanimous. Public forum? Nobody for the public forum, we will go on to presentations for tonight, call to the podium Mr. Andre Spinelli, our middle school principal, and Jen Meyer for student recognition certificates.
What are they trying to do?
Put it up. Is that up? Oh.
There it is. And we don't get to see.
Is this what they're trying to do?
Yeah.
That's all. Now scroll down to hit that.
This is it.
It's scrolling down.
It's down at the bottom.
See? I'm not the copy. I'm the guy. For the new teacher, we could see it.
Okay.
It's a stereo. Such a mess.
Alright, so first of all, thank you for having us tonight. There's a button on the top of it, Mr.
Thank you for having us tonight. Okay, I came with Mrs. Meyer to recognize what was seven, what were seventh grade students at the time that they won this contest towards the end of last year, and then were published in a book.
Yes.
So. The American Library of Poetry holds an annual contest for all students enrolled in grades three through twelve regardless of experience or publication. Each entrant may submit one poem of no more than twenty lines on any subject and in any style except concrete poems, shaped poems, or blackout poems marker covering another author's text to create a poem. The content must be original but can be inspired by other poets. So Mrs. Meyer's seventh grade ELA class created poems inspired by George Ella Lyons' Where I'm From poem. They were then encouraged to enter their poems and other poetry that they've created to the contest. Nine students, and they're seated here today, except one who I believe was unfortunately ill for this evening, were recognized as winners and were published in the Futures, the American Library of Poetry, twenty eighteen Poetry Collection. And Ms. Meyer has a copy of the book right there. The winners are listed before you, and we will get to naming those students in a second, because there is, there are two students whose poems we would like you to see. Take typing. It's probably one of the best classes. Okay, so this is Desiree Frasca.
Well, as they say on TV, please stand by, we are having technical difficulty.
That's right.
Yeah, sure, come on up.
Some of them are brave enough to read them out loud.
That is wonderful.
Yeah.
We prefer that.
Hi, I am Desiree Frasca, and I'm going to be reading Where I'm From.
Do I say my name? Hi, my name is Haley Pinkeris, and this is my poem. I am from Sweet Caroline, I am from broken arms and fractured knees that I thought would never heal. I'm from Paul and Jan, contiguous and educational. I am from the loss of Uncle Tony, oh how I will miss his wooden birds and his forgetfulness. I am from the hot summer and cold winters in Lake George. I am from seeing my deceased grandma from seventeen years ago, how I saw her in church that one morning. I am from Heaviset and Lad, I'm from I can put you in this world and I can take you out. I don't miss that saying. I'm from all the joking around in family Sundays, I'm from bowling and racing, how we had so much fun. I'm from tacos and chicken pot pie, those peas really got me. I'm from one fish, two fish, red fish, blue fish. I'm from my family, oh how my family gave me all of this.
Thank you Haley, excellent job. So we'll get to the two others that were taped for you tonight, just in case people got a little gun shy when they got up here.
I am from Galen John, from Chili and Bread. I am from the beach and the park, from trap music and childhood stories. I am from Go Eat Your Food, from You Are Strong and We Are Not Getting a Dog. I am from The Shovel and Christmas, from brown eyes and short hair, from being adopted. I am from going to church and my sister being a miracle, from stepping on glass and losing my grandma. I am from food and taking pictures in my yard. I am from a box that all my baby pictures are in, from sitting in the closet and being dusty. I am from never being touched, from being become short. Thank you.
And then we have one other. Okay. So this last poem is from Maya Espinosa.
I am Maya Espinosa, and I'll be reading Where I'm From. I am from Ellie and Juju. I am from macaroni and cheese and ropa vieja. I am from family vacations and New Year's parties with my families and friends. I am from curly dark hair and brown eyes, from my mom's old rice pot that lays on top of the stove with a seething batch of rice cooking. I am from arguing while playing dominoes and making up over a dinner and a movie. I am from the delicate glass angel that hangs on my dresser and the blue dream catcher that hangs on my door. I am from my family moving away and the stories of my dad's childhood in Dominican Republic. I am from Because I Said So and What's for Dinner, and my mom responding with food. I am from being short and sassy and not taking no for an answer. I am from Suave Mente and Romeo Santos. I am from a scrapbook that lays under my dresser containing my favorite people. Thank you.
Okay, so now what we'll do is we'll call up each individual winner. And winners, when you come up and you grab your certificate, please go through and make sure that you shake the board's hand as you, because they want to all congratulate you on a job well done. Mrs. Meyer will read your names.
Gabriela Castro. Justin Coniker. Maya Espinosa. Hannah Lutz. Haley Pinkeris. Nerzina Ramen. Heather Reed. And Gillian Yonker.
I just want to thank Mrs. Meyer and all the students again for bringing this to our attention, and the board for allowing me to share this with you guys tonight. Thank you very much.
Mr. Spinelli and Mrs. Meyer, we'd like on behalf of the Board of Education to thank you, and thank you for the work that you've done with these students, but also take the time to recognize the students and the efforts that they've done. Guess we have some future Edgar Allan Poe sitting in front of us as we go forward and enter into some literary works. But most of all, to the parents and to the support staff that have worked with the students, and to recognize you have a great group of kids here, great job parents, great job, you know, everybody that's had an influence on their lives. So great job students, we're very proud of you.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, Mr. President?
Sir.
Mrs. Meyer, if you could, and Mrs. Spinelli, if you could just return to the lectern for a moment.
Sorry, Mr. Bruce.
I have a couple of questions. Just a couple of questions about not only the accomplishment, but in general. So how does a board member get ahold of one of the books?
Um, did you buy the copy? How did you purchase it? Can I borrow one of yours so I can show them? Who has, Gillian, you have yours?
It's from the America Library.
Could you bring a few forms?
I'm sorry?
Could you bring us a few forms?
Yes.
And definitely we'll purchase those books.
I can bring them in for you.
I'd love to have a copy.
And it's from the America Library of Poetry, so we can still have it even though it's been published from last year.
That's phenomenal.
And we should have it in this library as well.
I think it should be in all three libraries.
In all three libraries, yeah.
How did we come about the opportunity to have our students publish, Mrs. Meyer?
So I do a poetry unit between February and April of each year depending on where the curriculum falls. And the contest is every year, and I submit as many students' work as I can. So I submit them all together as one large packet. But we actually had sixteen people that were chosen as winners, but some of the parents didn't return the information in order to be published, so we would have had more published in the book.
Gotcha. Is this the first group that's been published?
This is the first year, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Spinelli, great job, thank you.
There's one more question, Iris.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, would you be able to get copies for the libraries, for the elementary, middle, and high school libraries?
Yes, I'm sure they can still be purchased.
Once again, thank you, you can be proud of your students.
Thank you.
And we'll go continue on with our presentations for this evening. We will call up Ms. Angela Urbina Medina and our elementary principal, Nicole I. And she will introduce the kindergarten, first, and second grade teachers for a presentation on Super Kids program. And also our assistant principal is here, Jessica Mataraza, welcome.
Good evening. I'm going to quickly pass the microphone to Nicole I, the elementary principal. She's here with Mrs. Mataraza, the assistant principal, and several of the elementary teachers who are going to speak to you this evening about the Super Kids program. As you know, last year we began the implementation of Super Kids in kindergarten, and with the success of the program on the kindergarten level, we expanded the program's use to pre-K, first, and second grade. And tonight, they'll be providing you with an update.
Thank you.
Good evening, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak about the Super Kids reading program this evening. You're going to hear from our teachers in grades kindergarten, first, and second here, representatives. I just want to thank all the teachers either that are going to speak tonight on the behalf of the program or that are just here for support for their colleagues. Kindergarten teachers have had the opportunity to work with the Super Kids program and the Super Kids coaches for the last two years. This is our first year for first and second grade teachers with the program. In addition to having access to the Super Kids program, the teachers also had the opportunity to go to visit Monticello School District this year to actually work with the district and the teachers that have worked at the program for a number of years now. So it was a nice opportunity this year for them to be able to go up there and work with teachers in the field with the program. We've organized a presentation this evening by grade level, providing you with some feedback or voices from the field from our teachers. We also include in our presentation, you'll see some student work examples. So at this time, I'm going to call up Mrs. Rosenstock and Mrs. Jurey.
Welcome, Mrs. Jurey and Mrs. Rosenstock.
Good evening. So as you know, this is our second year with Super Kids. And last year, I think we struggled with the idea a little bit of sticking with fidelity to just the program. But I think on our second year, we're understanding why that was asked of us. And it kind of forced us to really delve into just the program and learn it inside and out. And I think that that's helped us continue on this year. We do see some places in the program where we want to add some things to it. And those would be high-frequency words, because the program's limited to eleven words. So we want to beef that up a little bit to give our kids the opportunity to be able to read more literature than just the Super Kids literature. We also see the need to add some more quality literature, because the program really didn't come with literature to support the learning. So we've been looking at how we can add some good quality literature to the program. And through our visit, Mrs. Rosenstock will talk a little bit more about this, to Monticello, we've learned some different multisensory supports that we can put in place to help support the program.
So we would like to thank the district for the opportunity to visit the Monticello School District, where they have used the program for five years. We were able to glean useful tools and information to incorporate that into our classrooms. One of the examples that we came back with is the children use the Wilson method of blending, and they'll say "k-att", "cat", and what we thought was really interesting was they do it twice, they'll go "k-att", "k-att", "cat", "cat", and I know I came back and started doing that with my kids, and it just reinforced the blending and doing the blending part twice and realizing, oh, this is a word. And so that was very helpful. The other thing that they did, and I don't know when they started it, but I started it in, I think, February I went, instead of just doing the letter of the week, we started to recite the entire alphabet with the sound. And so it's now the third quarter, it's April, we're doing our assessments, and I would say the majority of my kids knew twenty-four to twenty-six letters and sounds, where in years past, it's just the ones that we learned. So we thought that was very interesting, and we thought that that would really help them to move forward. It's fun to go to different schools and see how they incorporate things. We've enjoyed working with the program, and as Ann said, delving into it and seeing how we can make it an even better program for our school. So I'd like to thank you again for your continued support and trust in us as educators.
So, and before I leave, I just want to point out some of our artwork. These are Super Kids from the program, and this was a culmination at the end of meeting all of the Super Kids.
And the kids, please.
Yeah. I didn't.
It's like a clubhouse, which is an old school bus, so they made school buses, and they were able to draw your favorite character. And they really, like, got into it, and we're really very happy about it.
That artwork is included in their presentation that they have, if you scroll up.
Oh yeah, my clubhouse.
It is in your presentation.
Mrs. Rosenstock, are those characters from the program? Are those characters behind you from the program?
Yes, there's three of them.
Of the thirteen.
The thirteen characters, yes.
So I will open up for questions from the board, Mr. Story.
So just a quick question, are the teaching team in kindergarten, are they still really engaged and excited about the program?
Yes. They love the characters, they're kind of disappointed when we stop meeting them, because at the thirteenth letter, we stop, but then it goes into a club, and how they have supernoodles in the club, that's the leader for the week, and so then the focus changes. I do want to just play one little video of one of them.
But yes, the kids, the teachers are still very enthusiastic about the Super Kids in kindergarten.
And ask them. So while we're waiting for that video, what type of assessments do you use to assess these children? Both formative and...
Every quarterly, we assess their, the letters that they have learned to that point. We, this last marking period in January, we started to assess their blending ability and the memory words or the high-frequency words that they have introduced into the program. And every two lessons... And every two lessons, every two lessons, units, rather, Super Kids has a bench, an assessment that is done on a Chromebook. And in the middle of the year, there's a middle-of-the-year benchmark for the first thirteen lessons, sorry.
So I'm clear, the whole kindergarten, all the classes, all the teachers use the Chromebook to do the assessment for that, right? Correct?
To my understanding, yes.
And is there a, while we can get the data from that, a way to obtain the data, like how, where they started to where they go?
The data is all in our Google Docs, Docs. There's a pre-assessment in September that we give them.
Right.
They're, they're all in the document, it's in our Google Docs, every kid's unit, unit assessment, and then the benchmark. The, the one that we do, one-on-one with the letter sounds, is in their folders, but it's not on the Google Docs.
So without dating either one of us here, you've been around for, you know, a little while as far as teaching goes. And as far as programs go, do you find that this program has been a great motivational program? Do kids love this program above all other programs that have been at school?
I think that they are blending and reading at a much earlier pace than in past programs because they are getting the concept of blending at an, immediately.
The focus more is on word attack than word memorization.
Right. So they do a lot of writing because they feel that the writing enhances their ability to remember the sounds.
And it's also skills that can carry them throughout their whole day.
So children need to be excited about reading. And you, do you find that these children are very excited about, you know, doing this program?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Do you find that the children are very excited about the program?
The children in kindergarten are very excited, they really enjoy it, they love, you know, "Etta, betta, etta, betta, etta, betta." You know, so they know the songs, they sing the songs. And, and now with the Super Noodle, the character a week, they, you know, talk about the letter V. And this week they talked about that the dog Golly, who's a character, had to go to the vet because he broke his, he hurt his paw with a piece of glass. And they're reading that he went to the hospital. And so it's, they love it. They, they are engaged, they look forward to it. We do a daily routine with them where we call out the word and they have to write it, you know. Like "dent" was one of the words today, "vest," and I'll, you know, we'll say, "Say the word, listen to each sound, vest, v-est." And they'll write it on their writing boards. And so the writing and the hearing of the sounds, excuse me, reinforces what they've learned.
But we don't want to hog the stage, we have first grade and second grade here as well.
We don't want you to go anywhere. Mr. Reverend Collins has a question.
I don't know about a question, I just want you to know that I have to go to school every night because of something you did during the day.
My apologies.
I have to be, I have to be read to. I have to know what words were sounded out that day, what letters were sounded out that day. And then I have to read a book, be read a book. And it's all your fault. Thank you for it.
I'm proud to say that's my fault.
Wayne? No, Wayne does not have a question.
John, yes.
John?
I was just going to ask, this is the second year that the kindergarten has been doing the program. Are the teachers satisfied that you're able to make those little changes to the program? I noticed you mentioned one where you said at a certain point, the lesson becomes too long. Have you guys been given the flexibility and are you happy with the ability to make the changes that you see are working and not working? And thank you for helping Reverend Collins with his reading.
I'd like to now introduce Mrs. Tammy Connergriff on behalf of first grade.
Thank you. Welcome, Mrs. Connergriff, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good evening. So the first year of first grade has been not only implementing a brand-new reading program, but also implementing all the new technology that came along with it. So we, as it's the first time we're having smart boards in our classroom and Chromebooks. Thanks to our tech department and Nancy Sharoff, who's been an invaluable resource this year, acclimating to the smart board and the Chromebook has been a very small, smooth process. Integrating the reading program into our classroom, it's the first year of any program in the twenty-five years I've taught here. So the first year is always one of exploring the program, day by day, lesson by lesson, unit by unit, looking for the components of the program that you feel work for the students. At the same time, finding the components that you feel down the road are going to need to be tweaked, supplemented for both our students achieving beyond where the program is at and struggling with on-level material. And that is something that we have done for every new reading program, as I said, in the twenty-five years I've been here. As we're still in the process of going through year one, that still is a work in progress. What we have found along the way is that there are a lot of materials that can be made to go along with it. The visit to Monticello opened up some opportunities to gain access to some of those materials. So in looking ahead, we've asked for time this summer to collaborate with each other, with colleagues, to create those materials and have them to use to supplement the program for next year. Any questions?
Uh, yes, Mrs. Connergriff. Have you found the transition from kindergarten to first grade, having had that experience with the children coming in with the experience and the excitement? How's the transition been into, I know it was a first-year program, I can recognize the, the challenges that you may have in, in the implementation of the program in, in year one. But how have you found the, the transition? Are the kids coming in more excited about reading in first grade than they have in the past? Where, what's the level that you found the children at?
I think as in, as in years past, September is always a time when, we all know, look, as educators, children lose ground over the summer, that's a given. So when they walk in, there's a little bit of backing up to do. The kids who have those skills and left solidly with them, they get them back immediately. Their excitement, their excitement, their excitement for learning doesn't come from just a program. It comes from us, from those they've left in kindergarten as teachers, from those they come to. This is a tool, are they excited about reading? Yes. Do I, would I stand here and say, it's because of this program? Would I stand here back when we used HM and say, it's because of that program? No, it's, it's because of what we, as the educators, bring to it. The program, any program. It's the tool, much like putting the paintbrush in Picasso's hand. It's the tool that we're using to inspire them, if that makes sense.
Wayne?
How much time during the course of the day do you implement the program?
I'm sorry, how much?
How much time during the course of the day is the program used?
The program, I, our, our ELA block is, I believe, ninety minutes, do I have that correct? ELA block is ninety minutes of everybody's instructional day. There is an intervention period within our day that for many of us, I believe in first grade, Mrs. Osuba, correct me if I'm wrong, we're using that time to focus on the writing aspect of the program because there, there is a lot there, there's a wealth of material to choose from. You just, as the professional, need to know how to pick and choose from what's going to best suit your students' needs. So I think that that intervention time, which is an additional forty minutes, is where the writing time is being focused on. The ninety minutes would be their reading instruction.
Yes.
So with the, with this particular program, how difficult is it to differentiate your instruction?
Wayne, could you speak into the mic?
How difficult is it to differentiate your instruction?
No, that's okay, I heard, I'm, I'm old, but my hearing's not that bad, not yet. Not yet, oh, yes, I am. There again, I think like with any other program, it's, it's what we're going to bring to it. There are materials there. We have found that the library books, which are the leveled readers that we use during small-group instructional time, while some of them, many of them are at their level, they're long. They're, they're on average fourteen to seventeen pages long, which for a six and seven-year-old is a long book. So what we're doing is breaking it down and spreading it out over the course of days because to sit there and get through that in a small-group time, it's, it's not realistic. And it's not realistic for their attention span. You want the time with them to be most effective, so therefore you adjust what you're doing. Can this be adjusted like anything else that we've used in the past? I think with creativity, you have a staff that's committed, a staff that's very professional, it can be, it can be adjusted and supplemented like any other program we've used in the past.
I think that was going to be one of my questions, is how do you find the ease of doing a differentiation in a classroom? Are you able to, with relative ease, be able to differentiate your instruction towards, with this program? Do you find it more difficult, do you find it easier?
I'm not finding it to be either more difficult or easier. I'm finding, it's, as I've said, I've, I've done this for twenty-five years. So this is the tool we have, you kind of go through, you look, the first year, that's the first year of any program, you're trying to do it with as much fidelity as you can. For the kid that you know is really, really struggling, as a professional, you're obligated to supplement for them so that you're meeting their instructional need. Just like for the kid who's, who's won this year in particular, who is beyond where we're reading at and into chapter books, you're supplementing for them because as a professional, it's your obligation, it's what's best for them. Is it something that you can tackle easily enough? I think so. I think with, with the materials we have at hand and our book room, which has been, you know, reorganized and given access to us to be able to sign books out, I don't see that it should be a difficult process.
So with that being said, how is it with your, I know your colleagues, you all talk during, you know, lunch and you obviously get together about this program. How do they feel about the, the challenges of this program, you know, as far as that, as far as this program goes?
To be honest, I think the challenges that we are finding across the board, be it K one or two, and for that matter, even though we're not talking about Super Kids, four, five, or six, right on straight through, the challenges we are finding with any program are the challenges we find not so much with the program, but with the standards. Not all of the standards are written to be developmentally appropriate for our kids, and we know that. And programs are written to align with those standards, that's their job. And so the difficulties that we find, I think you would find with anything because there are just certain skills that six and seven-year-olds shouldn't be doing, but the state's saying they should. So we work with it and we, we help them along and we support them and we do the best we can with the rules we've been given by the state of New York. So I think the challenges that we're finding, you would find with any tool we're using, the challenges stem more from the standards than they do the program.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question, Mr. Byrne?
Yes, Mrs. Connergriff, I just want to thank you for reminding us that without the teachers we have, this is just another reading program. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I do. Mr. President, thank you, Mrs. Connergriff, thank you for coming today. And while tools are no good without the, the master wielding them, or yielding them, I should say, at the same time, there's a difference between tools. So I'd like for you to just give me an indication of, based on the years of service here and the number of programs that you've seen, I'd like a gauge for Super Kids specifically and how it stands up because we're using your input to make a decision as to whether or not we endorse it.
So it is the first phonics-based program that we've used since, since using Process Phonics, when I taught kindergarten years ago. And Process Phonics was not an integrated program, it was strictly a phonics program. So this, in the twenty-five years that I've been here teaching at the primary, is the first phonics-based program we've used. So at this point in the year, overall for my class, and there again, I can speak for my class, do I feel that their phonics skills are solid? Yes, they should be, it's a phonics-based program. The literature, the reader, I don't know age-wise, I don't know if you remember Buffy and Mac, Dick and Jane, any of that at all. Buffy, Buffy and Mac were never Pulitzer Prize-winning pieces of, of literature, but they taught kids how to read. This, the stories, while they're engaged because they've come to become, they've become very familiar with the Super Kids and are excited to continue learning about them, is it the most exciting literature ever? No. It's what you're going to bring to it as the teacher, again, you know, building that excitement. But being a phonics-based program, is it something that can teach kids to read? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if that, anything else, or?
Any other questions?
That's all, Mrs. Connergriff, thank you.
Anybody else want to be heard? If not, thank you, Mrs. Connergriff.
Thank you.
I'd like to call up for second grade Mrs. Kim Wright and Mrs. Corey Murphy.
Welcome, Mrs. Wright and Mrs. Murphy.
So our second graders, this is their first time being exposed to the Super Kids. They love the Super Kids. It's, in September, they were engaged and connected with the Super Kids through technology. Each Super Kid had their own song and character page, the kids loved it. It was a big argument turned into a debate on which Super Kid, once they got to know all of them, that they would get to sing along with, "Etta, betta," usually took the win. I find that the students are making predictions really well. They want to talk about what they think is going to happen based on the story yesterday, based on the title, based on the pictures. They have really done a nice job, even with, without being asked to do that. They want to talk about it, they want to read ahead, they sneak ahead even if it's a, please don't. They know what's happening next. Some of them know because there's the parent portal that is being accessed at home, they're going ahead. If you act, put out the reader for that unit, they can see the reader, they can see the super magazine, and some of them are reading it over and over and over, which is fantastic. So that was an area loved. We also have an area of needs improvement. Because it's their first year, it's a little overwhelming, there is a lot for them to handle as far as reading and writing. They're expected to write every single day through the writing process. They're expected to read every day through the reader, through the super, through the book club, depending on which unit you are in. And then, of course, we love to provide them an opportunity to read a book of their choice from the classroom library, from home, or from the school library. We're finding, though, that their stamina for reading and writing is increasing as the school year has progressed. Looking forward, we're really hoping that we see the kids coming in who have started in kindergarten, progressed to first grade and now entering second grade, are going to already know the Super Kids, be familiar with the program, be, be familiar with the center-based or station-based activities, and it's going to come right in, in September, you can jump right into it instead of taking extra time to get to know the kids, get to know the program. I feel that, we hope that we will gain a lot more learning time instead of review time. So we're looking forward to next year already.
Do you have any questions?
Yes. Wouldn't be else if we didn't have one, so.
This is the tougher year because we have to have here.
Yeah, you have no exposure from the previous year. So what I'm interested in is, I see the data that was provided and the numbers, forty-three percent are meeting, or exceeding expectations with nineteen that are approaching and thirty-eight that are not meeting expectations at this time. What would be fascinating is next year you'll have the data to compare it to and see if there's any type of correlation as we go into next year when they have some experience going in and they've had the program since kindergarten.
Absolutely, and you have to understand that these assessments are completely done on the Chromebooks. So they're also learning how to read passages on the Chromebook that are more than one or two paragraphs long and taking assessments on there and going back and comparing them. So this is a huge task for them as second graders. They're seven and eight, some nine-year-olds that are now taking a formal test on a computer that they will have to do later on in life as well as we all have done. But this was a huge challenge for them and they are overcoming it. They're, they're successful, we review it. We get a chance to, we put, some of us have put ourselves in as a student so that we can bring the assessment up and go over it after they're done so that they can understand, oh, I can move this up and down because they haven't been, they're used to sliding their finger on a phone or on a tablet and the Chromebooks that we have do not have that flexibility, I believe kindergarten does, and some first grade. Yeah, and they're also learning that they can-
Yeah, and they're also learning that they can blow up the passage, so they can see the font better.
So, besides the fact that there's been no previous experience going into this program this year, what do you find your biggest challenge to be with this program?
I think for us, we are missing a piece of vocabulary that we would like to add more into. There are some general vocabulary words, but now that we are familiarized with the unit and what the expectations are of each different section of the program, that we can add more vocabulary and to build our students' learning. When you do the vocabulary, it's also increasing their writing skills. So, it sort of has that twofold where it helps each other out.
Anybody want to be heard? John?
Ladies, I know this was your first year in the program, so out of fairness, I'll ask Angela this question. Angela, is there the ability, a tool, to assess growth from K to 1 to 2? Sorry to throw that at you.
No, no apology necessary. It would be difficult to do, because the skill level of the kindergarten student as opposed to the student in the second grade, we would have to find a common point to measure. There are data points available for students once they're in the program for three years. We'll be able to measure growth in some areas, but you have to keep in mind that the maturity of the student changes and the developmental level of the student changes along with that.
And then, in the third grade, they start to take the ELAs?
Correct.
So, they'll be measured for growth from then on?
Absolutely. And keep in mind that the students, although they're participating in the super kids program for literacy, they still sit for the STAR assessments. So, students take the early literacy STAR, early literacy. Once they are readers, when they're emergent readers to readers, they move into the STAR reading assessment. So, those are growth measures that we can use as data points to gauge what level they're on and their proficiency.
Well, just as my colleague said, when we are asked to endorse this program, we want to know, you know, from you guys, that our kids are progressing and growing. So, thank you.
Jody?
You said there was a parent portal for this. Now, do we, are you getting good parent involvement in this program from home?
It's mixed. It depends on their capabilities at home as to what they have. I think in the beginning, it was, I know, second grade program, the second grade part is limited, the program is adding more second grade materials, so we didn't have as much as the K-1, so I would think compared to kindergarten.
On the kindergarten level, we've discussed maybe having a parent night to educate them on how to use the portal, because it's not the easiest portal to use. Once you're in it and using it, it's not bad. The kids can probably do better than the parents can, but the initial sign-on takes the parents. So, we'd like to do some kind of information night for them.
Yeah, there are restrictions on to what type of a device it can be presented, accessed on. And just to add to that, I found that for my students I can speak of, because I can go on and see when they go on at home and what they did, I think what unit was where the games stopped?
2.
2, so Unit 2, which is beginning of the year, a lot of what they loved doing, I mean, they loved the readers, they loved the supers, but they're seeing that all day long, they loved the games. Who doesn't love online games as a kid? That stopped. So, there went some of the motivation to continue going on for some students who maybe struggle with reading but love the games. And as far as we know, super kids does plan on updating, I don't know that we have a date, to be determined.
Anybody else want to be heard? If not, I would like to take this time to thank all of the teachers that were here tonight and the staff that came to give this presentation to us. It really shows that you care about your district and care about the students that you teach every day, and we know that you do a great job with all the students that you have an impact on every day. So, on behalf of the board, we thank you for everything that you do and continue to do for this district, and it shows by you being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to reports and information, correspondences. I have nothing for this evening. Any other board member? John?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to let everybody know that we will be doing our second Hall of Fame induction coming this fall at the homecoming football game, and the deadline is fast approach, and it's listed as April 15th, but I want to let everybody know that we've extended that deadline till April 30th. And anybody who wants to nominate someone for the Ellenville High School Hall of Fame can either do so through the website, the district's website, or get a form from the athletic director's office by April 30th. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're gonna be taking a look at that committee that's comprised of the Hall of Fame and some of the, and see where we're at and see if we want to, see if there's any changes to be made there. One thing that I did have was, we did meet as a pool committee today, myself, Vince Napoli, Reverend Collins was there, and Joe Logan, and some representative of the village. The pool was in, as far as we could tell, in very good shape. It survived the winter very well, with some minor things that need to be taken care of down there. But we spoke to the village, and it's gonna be speaking to the town and our guys, and there's gonna be, they're gonna get together and get that pool up and running, you know, very quickly this year. How'd you feel about Vince?
Yeah, I thought it was actually one of our better years, other than some critters, you know, in the building which we suffer through every year. It was actually in pretty good shape.
Yeah, I thought so, too. They're very unique, they use everything.
They use everything.
They had a deck of cards there, I really wonder if they were playing cards. I wonder who lost. Anybody else want to be heard this evening?
I'm so glad I didn't get one.
Nobody? All right. Student representative not here this evening? Superintendent Lisa Wong.
So, I had the opportunity to attend the high school play this weekend, Little Women, and it was excellent. As usual, our students have done a great job representing us. The casting, the costumes, really, it was just wonderful. I really want to thank the volunteers, the parent volunteers, that have been out really helping the program, and our new director has really delivered on two excellent programs, both the middle school and the high school. So, we're gonna try to get her to a board meeting, maybe with some students, to give some insight on the drama club and, you know, the performances. But it was a really great performance this weekend. So, kudos to everyone, including the music department here, and the community members that played in the pit band again. So, it was wonderful. On, well, before I get to May 23rd, there's the petitions for the school board elections are available in the central office with the district clerk. They have to be returned on April 22nd, Monday, April 22nd, by 5 o'clock. The office, the district office will be open all week, next week, and that Monday, so that petitions can be returned and picked up. We did have, many of you may have read in the newspapers and saw on television, in New York State, there was an issue with computer-based assessments for the ELA exams. Our district tested on the computer-based exams for our middle school, 6, 7, 8. And we did experience some real challenges. Our students couldn't upload the test, some of the exams were frozen, and it was, we think it might have been fixed, but, you know, for that particular day, we have a lot of questions, which will be determined, we'll see the answers to, when we get the scores back. I've spoken to our district superintendent, and, you know, the vendor is being held accountable by the commissioner and the state education department, but that doesn't negate the fact that we did have, you know, some significant issues here. So, we're gonna wait and see what the results are, but, you know, we're discussing what the options are, because there were students that got frustrated, didn't return to the test, we're waiting to see what kind of guidance comes from state aid. But it was just our middle school that did computer-based instruction for ELA. The last thing I have this evening is the Ulster County School Boards meeting, School Boards has a meeting, probably quarterly, and we attended a meeting last night where the students in the culinary program made some, made a meal, a dinner, and there was a presentation on the annual budget for Bosse's, and really, the students, one of our students from Ellenville was in the kitchen, a part of the culinary team. And the meal was great, the presentation was great, and we had the opportunity to hear from three students who attend a special ed program, the PTEC program, and the VOTEC program. So, it was a great evening, and we're going to make sure that a calendar is put together earlier in the year, trying to get all these dates laid out for you in September, October, so that we can plan. And, you know, if you can go, I know some of you have been there, and there are always conflicts, but it was a great evening, and it's great to see the students. The next meeting that the Ulster County School Boards is having is May 23rd, and it's going to be held up in Kingston at the Best Western. And at that final meeting, they'll be recognizing the Ulster County Distinguished Friends of Education. And the Ellenville Central School District or the Ellenville School Board has nominated Patty and Mark Steinoff to receive that award on May 23rd. If anyone's interested in going to the dinner, please let Nefisa know, we'll have Nefisa call you to see, you know, if anyone's gonna, who's gonna go, because we need to reserve that relatively soon, so they get a count from the district. So, I know Mr. Matrician wrote a really nice summary of Patty and Mark's service to the district, and that'll be shared in their program, but that dinner is definitely open to all school board members, and obviously, their families, their families are friends. And that's all I have tonight.
So, in keeping with that, on the Bosse's Board, we are going to have an open seat. I was notified by Mrs. Osterhout that she will be resigning from her seat, but she's gonna stay on until we can find somebody to replace her with that. So, anybody knows, if any of you are interested, or knows of anybody, please get that to me as soon as possible. Mr. Napoli?
So, if you've spent any time in the business office, you know I love to eat and I love to go to the cafeteria. And in my report, you'll see that we started serving smoothies in the cafeteria every Tuesday and Thursday. I love smoothies, a lot of people in the business office love smoothies. If the children take it part of a reimbursable meal, it's only the dollar eighty-five for the meal, otherwise, it could be à la carte. I had a strawberry banana and skim milk, and it was 16 ounces. I can't say enough about how good of a job that Bill is doing on the smoothies in the kitchen. So, stop by, have a smoothie on me if you want, I'll be happy to treat you for lunch or for breakfast.
You all heard that, so get as many people as you can and charge it to Vince.
On a more serious note, I have been fielding some questions, you know, about the budget, specifically regarding our state aid, and oftentimes, the numbers that get reported, it might not be clear why the increase is not as big as what we might think it would be reported in the budget. Specifically, if you look at the governor's report or the legislative runs for state aid, also on the budget website, it looks like we're getting 1.2-plus million dollars in state aid, but you have to realize that a big chunk of that is building aid. So, that's based on the capital project that we're just finalizing now, almost a half million dollars of the state aid increase that we're getting is based on building aid. So, we've spent the fourteen and a quarter million dollars for the capital project, but a lot of that comes back in building aid. So, it's not all money that we can just throw at the budget. We have to pay, like you would a car loan or pay your mortgage, you have to pay the principal and interest, so the state reimburses us almost 70% of that, and that's what you see in building aid. So, if anyone has any questions about our building aid, I'll be happy to field those questions as well. Maybe over a smoothie.
Over a smoothie.
That's all that I have, thank you.
Deputy Superintendent Miss Angela Urbina Medina?
Nothing additional to report, just a thank you to the elementary school teachers and the elementary administrators that were here tonight talking about the super kids program. I appreciate the feedback and the hard work that they've done on the program this year and last year as well.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Onto personnel resolutions for this evening. Under 6.1 Administrative Sub, upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Frank Mulholland be appointed as administrative substitute at a rate of $75 per hour worked, effective April 1, 2019 through June 30, 2019.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Under 6.2 Special Education Consultant, upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be reserved, be it resolved, rather, that Dr. James Fogarty be appointed as a Special Education Consultant at a rate of $750 per day worked for an additional 10 days per month, effective April 10 through June 30, 2019.
Second.
Moved seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.3 Certified Substitute Teacher, upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Catherine Diamond be appointed Certified Substitute Teacher at a rate of $125 per hour, no, it's gonna be per day worked.
Yeah, per day.
Yeah, it's not per hour, per day worked, for 18, 19 school year, a little typo in there. Have a motion?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Can we amend that to say per day?
Yes, that's what I asked, I asked for it to be modified. It's been modified to read per day. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.4 On Certified Substitute Teachers, upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that John Bennett, Summer Roberts, Sarah Levine be appointed on Certified Substitute Teachers at a rate of $95 per day worked, and substitute teacher aids at a rate of $82 per day worked for the 18, 19 school year.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.5 Support Related Substitute, upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Talia Parker be appointed Substitute Teacher at a rate of $82 per day worked, 18, 19 school year.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor?
You jumped from the discussion very quickly, I just want to commend the administration for addressing the issue of a shortage of subs and helping the process move along. Thank you.
Thank you. So, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.6 Upon the Recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Sharon Albright be appointed Substitute Cafeteria Monitor, rate 1150 per hour worked for 18, 19 school year.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.7 June Regents Review, be it resolved upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, the following teacher be appointed for June Regents Review at a contractual rate of $55 per hour, not to exceed three hours per week, per subject, effective April 10 through June 17, if needed.
So moved.
Paul Westbrook, Common Core Algebra. Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Mr. Burns?
Does it say how many weeks? It's three hours per week, how many weeks?
April 10, 13.
It goes April 10, gives a, three months.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Onto Policies. 7.1.
Motion move Policies.
It's been moved and seconded, for the list of policies to be moved, and any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Under 8.1 Student IEPs, be it resolved?
Please, please, just present it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Mr. Burns?
I'd like to separate 8.2 to recognize the memorial award.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not on the floor, only 8.1.
He said, okay.
8.1 has been, is on the floor. Any further discussion?
How many moved?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? 8.2 Resolved that the Herbert and Edith Kaplan Memorial Award in the amount of $750 be established pursuant to the terms and criteria designed by the donor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Under Other. 9.1 Health and Welfare, resolved that the contracts providing health and welfare services for Ellenville Central School District in the amount indicated below be approved.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 9.2 Donation, resolved that the donation of poetry books, Shakespeare books, and baseballs from Iris Freeman to the high school be accepted.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
I suppose to abstain.
You have no benefit from it.
No, no.
You threw a lot of baseballs.
An empty house. Sitting in my son's bed for five years, brand new.
Wow, great, thank you.
So, I brought him to...
Yeah, the kids will get a lot of use out of it.
Yeah, I hope so. And the books, too, Phil.
And the books, yes. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 9.3 Scopes... And the books, yes. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 9.3, Scope Of Services, and that is extensive.
Effective moving in its entirety.
It's been moved in its entirety. Any second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Could you just mention what it is, please?
It is...
Just mention what you know about it.
It is an effort for the Ellenville School, the town of Awarthing, and the village of Ellenville, to work together on an effort. But specifically, the school is going to be focusing on certain criteria that they have to do pursuant to law. Basically, in the beginning, I'll read some in the beginning, it's just the breathtaking beauty, rich cultural diversity, and historical significance, education, healthcare, recreational opportunities in the area consisting of Awarthing, Ellenville, Craig's, Warren, Napinock are overshadowed by history and current negative perceptions of our community, which false perceptions advertise adversely affect residents' quality of life. And in order for us to, as it goes on and summarizes, in order for us to try to change that, we're going to be trying to work together to make an effort to, by getting somebody in the marketing area, to, you know, a professional that deals with marketing, to be able to change those areas that have been overshadowed in recent years.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Is there anything that anyone wants for the next agenda? No? Then the next meeting, mark your calendars, is April 24th, and it'll be a Wednesday this time. And that's the annual Bosse's Budget Adoption, which all districts, I believe, meet on Wednesday.
Yes.
All Ulster County districts meet on Wednesday for their school board meeting, for their Bosse's Budget Adoption. And you have some important dates in your, I believe you should have gotten them in your calendars to mark. So we have some, a whole bunch of listing of important dates that are coming up for events that are going on in the school. It is a busy time of year, the rest of April and May is an extremely busy time, as well as June. So you have as many events as you can try to make. Please mark your calendars and attend those. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Word.